All right, everybody. It's a little after seven and it's time to call our, what month is it? It's May. Our May work session to order. And we've got a good, healthy agenda tonight. And I'll start with some awards and presentations that we will have next Monday night. First would be this award that the city of Sugar Hill received from the Georgia Soil and Water Conservation Commission. We are their local issuing authority of the year. It's pretty big news for Kim Landers and her team. And so there's something that I'll read next Monday night, but this is the recognition that the city of Sugar Hill received. And then next, I may have mentioned this during our April meeting, but we've received the Daughters of the American Revolution Conservation Committee Award for some projects that we've done, including the installation of pervious papers at some of our parks. And so this is a pretty significant recognition. And so I will talk a little bit about this next Monday night as well. And then lastly, and sorry to have so many for me on that night, we will be doing the tradition that we do every year of giving cords to our youth council members that are seniors that will be graduating from their respective high schools and moving on to college or wherever else they may be going after high school. And so those are the three items that we have. And next, I'll move on to old business. And we've got item number one there is the retirement plan restatement. And I know we've had a lot of conversation about that, particularly in April. And I'll just open it up to see if there's any other conversations or comments about it. And I don't hear any. So we'll just move on to item number two. Troy, that is you. That is the solid waste contract amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've talked about this particular item, I think, since February. And there have been a couple of rounds of updates since that time. The latest update that I have for you is the vendor has put together a recommended group of changes to a contract or prospective contract amendment. And I will outline those for you on the screen. And then I want to go through the memo briefly that I've provided in the packet. The packet was updated today, unfortunately, not Friday. And so you may not have had a chance to review the memo. If I can stall a little longer, I can open the right file for you and talk through what is in the recommendation, the solid waste contract.
Is that what we're waiting on? Okay. Jonathan's working feverishly.
Sorry. I'm going to basically outline a few items in the memo. There is a budget impact for the recommendation to change the, no, don't worry about it. I got it. To change the structure of the contract to add an additional week of recycling. That was one of the items that we talked about. There is a offer from Waste Management to provide a new customer class for seniors and to provide a residential rate for seniors. Those are 65 years and up. And that would be a $2 discount on that rate from the current residential rate of 1966. And that would drop that to $17.60 per month. And I think I want you to keep some numbers in your mind as we're talking through this. And I don't expect you to do the math in your head, but if you care to, you can. There are about 7,000 residential accounts. So they're running through this pro forma on their end with that number in mind. So $2 over 7,000 accounts per month. There is the standard residential customer rate would stay the same at 1966 a month under the proposal from Waste Management. They have determined that in order to add the additional week of recycling and to offer the subsidy to the senior residential rate class, they would need to drop the residential and commercial franchise fees. I think we've tossed around the last 12 months of revenues from that, and it's somewhere around $144,000. And that was up until we started asking the questions about the franchise fee. And Waste Management went back and read the last amendment where they dropped the franchise fee to 4% for residential and 5% for commercial. Previously, it was 5% for residential and 7.5% for commercial. And that's what led to the higher than normal budget number that Ms. Avery mentioned at one of the last meetings and my explanation, which was they didn't catch it until last year. So that will drop that number down based on those new, or the current franchise fee rates to something like 117,000, based on my rough math, on 4% and 5%, respectively. In order to also fund some of the changes in the amendment, Waste Management would have to increase the commercial rate by some 9%. So to also put some numbers to that, the commercial rate generates somewhere, or the commercial customer class generates some $6,500 a month in billing to those customers. So that would raise that to somewhere around 7,100 is the rough math. And so the customers, the commercial customers would see anywhere from, it's basically $2.50 a yard based on the size of the container they use. So it's not a big hit, but we do get complaints from time to time from those customers. With that, I will go ahead and connect and show you what the original recommendation was in the staff memo. And I do want to provide some additional clarification on where we ended up from Friday to today. So on the screen, you should see the recommendation from the memo, which is to change recycling from twice a week, or every other week to once a week recycling. And to create a senior residential customer class, 65 years and up. And that would reduce that rate to 1766 a month. There would be no change in the cart size, so there's no swap out or challenge associated with swapping carts. The residential class stays at 1966 a month and then removing both residential customer and commercial franchise fees with a 9% commercial rate increase. So as we talk through the merits of all this today internally, at least at the staff level, it was important, I think, to kind of say what we're getting, but also say what it's costing to achieve that. So the franchise fee does come in as general fund revenues and is the number that I mentioned. So it's roughly $120,000. The additional commercial rate increase of some 9% would generate $6,000 a year-ish, something like that. So it's not a, it's not a big number either, but it is a number that can be factored into what it would cost to increase the level of service for recycling and also provide this discounted subsidized rate for seniors. The issue that we got into with some of the senior customer class issue is that Waste Management doesn't really have a good mechanism to verify someone's eligibility. So they asked us to provide verification of a customer's eligibility, since we go through a similar process for the senior homestead exemption. So it would be a way for us to verify that a customer of Waste Management lives in the city and is eligible for that homestead exemption. So in going through that, the alternative to what is in the staff proposal is to take a number comparable to the 126,000 a year and apply that to our contract with Waste Management to reduce the rate for a senior customer class and to provide the once a week recycling. It's a way to buy up an enhanced level of service, should we choose to do that. And it wouldn't necessarily impact the customers necessarily. So it's a way to offset that. There's a way we could do that as a budget amendment, should we choose to do that. The recommendation is for these changes to go into effect November 1st, so we have some time to put together the details of that alternative proposal. It also preserves and provides a way for us to keep the franchise fee in the structure of the contract with Waste Management. So it will allow us to charge back the cost of the wear and tear on the roads and preserves the principle behind having a franchise fee as a part of the solid waste contract. So there's a lot in there. And again, I apologize for getting the memo out late today. So if I'll take some questions or allow some response. And I'm not sure the city manager didn't want to clarify a few items that I mentioned.
No, Troy. I think your description, I think the two options are to, one is to remove the commercial franchise and residential franchise fees or keep those as the, as the city continues to grow and, and then just fill the gap with own source revenues, which would be general fund revenues, fill that gap to provide that service and budget for that in our, in our annual budget. And I appreciate all the work that Troy has done on this. I certainly appreciate Councilmember Avery as well and, and her input. But that's where we are. I think it's, it's, it is a decision that was in, that would be in your hands as it relates to how we, how we go about this. It does maintain us at one of the lowest per month costs of residential customer rates in the, in the county. And I do want you to know that senior residential rate, the only way to measure that would be by homestead exemption. That's, that's a significant clarification. It's, if you're not homesteading, you're not going to get, we don't know how to, how to get there, other than through verification of every household that is getting residential service and how we, who's the account name in and how do we, how do we verify their, their age? So that's all I would like to provide.
If I can, just one more item. In the interest of being very thorough here, the option does exist for us to do nothing, make no changes to the contract or to rebid the service, should we choose to do that or remand it for further negotiation?
Thank you, Troy. I have one question, if you don't mind, before I open it up for questions from councilmembers. Initially, is, initially, will we scan homestead exemptions and automatically pull in customers? Or will they have to, I guess, what will our initial step into that be? Will we do that ourselves? Will we scan? And then if people aren't homestead exempted, then they can come to us and we can verify by another means?
I think we'd have to make known to the customers of Waste Management that it is available to contact us to verify eligibility. And then we would provide that information to Waste Management.
Okay. Got it. All right. Any other questions? Yes, Josh?
A few comments. Troy, thank you. I appreciate you taking this on. I know it's not been easy. I think right off the bat, we're giving up a lot, it seems like, for very little in return. I mean, you sit here and do the math. I mean, seniors would be saving 50 cents per week. I mean, that's not, is that worth it to our senior? I mean, that's kind of a slap in the face, honestly, on Waste Management. You know, we're trying to increase our commercial density here in Sugar Hill. You know, it sounds like our commercial base already is not happy with what our rates are for, for trash. I don't want to make them more unhappy with increasing their price of trash and then saying, hey, you can only use Waste Management. You have no other option. So you got to have trash service. We're going to increase it 10%. And then, you know, we lose franchise fees, you know? So it's kind of, it's a lose, 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 kind of in my mind, and we're not really getting anything from it. I mean, trash is sanitation. I don't want to go pick up trash myself. It's not an occupation that I want to have. I am more than happy to pay someone to come pick up my trash for $4.50 a week. That is 100% okay with me. That is not a price that is out of line, in my opinion. So, you know, I'll leave, I'll toss it back to the mayor so he can open up to someone else if they have some comments. That's kind of where I'm at with it. It's just not the greatest. And at the end of the day, are we getting this huge reward that we really are seeking versus what we're having? So, thanks, Troy.
Thank you, Josh. Any other, yes, Gary?
Yeah, some additional questions. I didn't follow what you were saying there at the end. It sounded like you were saying there's two options. One of them's a new one. What was that? What was that you were saying? And it sounded like you were saying there's something new today that involved tax payment instead of giving up the franchise fee? Can you re-explain that because I didn't follow you?
I think the, the suggestion was that we budget for the changes that we're talking about making and keep the franchise fee in the requirement with Waste Management.
Okay. That's what I thought I heard. Definitely not in favor of that. What's presented here looks, you know, not bad to me, except for the 9% increase. That's just way too much, I think, to give up for, for what we're gaining. It sounded like you said the franchise fee is 120,000. And the difference for the 120 versus the 145 we got last year was what? I didn't follow that part.
The rates that were being charged under the old contract were 7.5% for commercial, 5% for residential gross revenues. It changed in 2022 with the amendment to eliminate the bag service and reduce the commercial to 5% and residential to 4% of gross revenues. So that reduced our revenues, our franchise fee revenues from the 144 number to closer to 120 is the correct number right now.
Right. So that's, 120 sounds about in the ballpark of what I would have anticipated, just looking at $59 a month, 18 trips a month they're making for, I mean, not a month, 18, 59 and a quarter and 18 trips and a quarter for 12 trash pickups and six recycle pickups. You know, $3.20 or so per trips with that works out to be, add an extra six, that's $19.67 at that same amount, multiply that times 7,000 residents, 137 or so, which is less than we were collecting before. It'd be more if we're only collecting 120, but that's in the ballpark. But I cannot see a 9% commercial rate increase along with that. So especially, I mean, if we're talking about it raises 6,000, did you say a month for them? What was the 6,000 you said?
The difference in the commercial, so that 9% would amount to some $6,000 a year for all the commercial customers, just based on the last.
6,000 a year per customer, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
The total to Waste Management?
All of our commercial customers. There's not a large number of commercial.
So that's not a big number. And I wouldn't, would not expect our commercial base to be that large. But it seems like we're splitting hairs over, if they're talking about raising $6,500. I'm not doing a 9% increase for only $6,500. I think that certainly is a point that could be negotiated. The rest of it, I think, sounds to be in the ballpark. That's my thoughts.
I think at some point, we're probably just going to have to cut bait and run, to be honest with you, because this whole conversation started because people wanted to have recycling every week instead of every other week. And so if we can't get to a number that's agreeable and accomplish that weekly recycling, then maybe we just need to stick to what we have. Because I'm going to be honest with you, I don't hear a lot of people complaining about, about every other week recycling anymore. So, all good questions? Are there any other comments or questions? Yes, Meg?
I know that other cities do give some senior discounts, but I'm also not in agreement with having a 9% increase for the commercial rate. So maybe, like Joshua mentioned, the difference for the senior rate is not that much. So if we kept everybody the same at 1966 a month without a senior discount and, and had a lower, I just don't think the commercial rate should be, have a 9% increase. So I'd be willing to see the senior rate eliminated and still charge everybody the same. The franchise fee, I understand that goes into the, the general revenue and with the roads. I know that we also get funds from other sources, from the state, for the upkeep of our roads as well. But I would like to, I would not like to see the commercial rate increased. And the mayor's right, this did come about because we went from every other week, we went from every week to every other week recycling. And then the other problem was we went from bags to carts and the price went up. People were spending, especially small households, were not spending a lot of money on bags. And their bill increased $54 basically for a quarter. And they were spending $40 for maybe six months worth of bags. So that's where the biggest problem was, was getting rid of the bags. But mostly all the waste management companies out there, nobody's keeping bags. Duluth just transferred over as well. No more bags and all carts. And the thought that, you know, they, people who were on the bags all of a sudden had to pay so much more, plus not get weekly recycling, created some issues. So I just don't like the commercial rate. And I'd be willing to give up the senior for that. And I'm okay with the franchise fees. And you said this would not start till November 1st, correct? So would we get any franchise fees up until November 1st, correct? Okay.
Thank you, Meg. Any other comments? Taylor?
Troy, I appreciate your work on this. And since we're the third lowest rate in, in the county, that 9% increase, it looks like we're about 17% less than Berkeley Lake, the next higher customer than us. Do we know comparatively, from a commercial standpoint, do our commercial rates fall in a, in the same line as our residential rates do? In other words, if it's a 9% different, or 9% increase, they would still be, would we still be then the, the third lowest category for our commercial rates, if you have that information at hand? If you don't, I understand, but that'd be my, just so we understand, because sometimes we use percentages, we really don't know what that means, especially if we're only talking about $6,500 a year.
I did not anticipate the question.
Sorry, Troy.
Question that was going through my mind, but here, here it is. And I've, I've got some other cities to the left of this, so I'd be happy to shift around and move, but that'll give you an idea of what some others are charging.
It is, I know it's not really that fair to do, it's not an apples to apples comparison because Smyrna, for example, probably has three to five times the number of commercial customers that, that we would have. So it's really not a, that's not a real fair comparison there on a, and plus that they're in Cobb County, so proximity to landfills and who their, all there is probably makes a big difference as well.
I think you mentioned Berkeley Lake. That's the one.
Yeah, I see Berkeley Lake. So we would be a little bit higher, although I didn't even know Berkeley Lake had any commercial customers, actually. But it puts us in, kind of in line, almost directly in line with Snellville, who almost certainly has more commercial customers than, than we do as well. I understand the concern over the 9% increase, but if it's $6,500 a year, that's, it's pretty, and it looks to be in line with what other municipalities are paying.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Josh?
Can I make another comment? I'm just a little, I think it might even be in our best interest. I don't know if we need to take any action or direction here, if we need to wait till next week, but almost see if we could get a rate lock of what we currently have, you know, and kind of protect our future almost for our commercial, you know, and our residents now of the, of the rate we have, $4.50 a week. I will pay anybody come pick up my trash. I'll pay you $5. So it's almost like that, I mean, that, that would be my opinion. That's my thought of almost, can we, can we look at some sort of contract extension? Keep what we have, keep our franchise fees. I mean, they're on our roads. We need something to go back to our roads. They're running them. And see if we just keep our rates where they're at. It's kind of where my mind's going right now. And that, that just might be the best case in my mind. And then trying to put more admin work on, on our city officials, our city workers, trying to go to the homestead and, you know, collecting, putting the word out to say, hey, you know, come up here to City Hall. We got to get you to transmit that to Waste Management for the senior discount. I just don't, I just don't know. So like I said, I think we're just, I think what they came back with, we're giving up a lot compared to what they're coming to the table with.
Thank you for the suggestion. Troy, do you think that between now and next Monday, we could, we could explore that possibility? Okay. Don't have to do anything tonight on this. This was discussion tonight, so. All right. Any other comments or questions? I would encourage each of y'all, if you have questions or comments, you know, you can reach out to Troy individually. And I'm sure that putting him on the spot on nights like tonight is probably challenging for him, but he might be able to, to have some better responses offline. All right. Next, we're going to move on to new business. We have a town center overlay design review. Kaipo, I believe that is you. Kaipo?
This is a request for a design review for a carport and storage building on Linear Avenue.
And if you could, just a moment, let's get it up on the screen for everybody to look. I don't, I don't have my laptop or anything in front of me, so.
Let me do it this way. I'm sorry. This is a property we've seen before when the owners came in to fix up the place. It's kind of a nice example of continued reinvestment in the area. Staff's recommending approval. It's alongside the house, similar aesthetic and, or recommending approval.
Thank you, Kaipo. And I'll just say, I drove over there today to take a look at it. I hadn't been over in that area for a long time, and there's a lot of reinvestment going on. And I encourage everybody to just go over there and take a look at it. Looks great. All right. Any questions or comments of Kaipo on this item? Yes, no? Meg?
I just wanted to re, also echo what you said. I drove out there today as well. And I hadn't seen that area for a long time. And from what I And I hadn't seen that area for a long time, and from what I see here, that's proposed, and this can look great there. And that area is looking so much better. So I think this is, maybe would encourage others to realize this is, this is a good thing. So, I really like the idea and I liked what I see in the neighborhood, so.
Thank you, Meg. Any other questions or comments? Alright, so we do have a public hearing on it, yes? Gary?
On the, she had there, the, the garage and the building, that's a really low-sloped roof, which looks like, that'd be way lower than you could use with shingles. What's the roofing material proposed on that?
I assumed it was shingles.
I don't think you can do shingles to that low a slope. Think the water sits there and goes back under and causes rot, but, I mean, I'll defer to you, but you might investigate that. I, I think with that low a slope, you gotta go with rolled roofing or, like, plastic or metal or something, but if you can just, that, that's the only question I had there.
Thank you, Gary. Alright, any other questions or comments? We're not, we don't do comments tonight, we have our public hearing next Monday night, but thank you. But if you, if you wanna help Kaipo answer that question later this week, I'm sure that he would, he would love it. Thank you. And then he could get back to Gary and answer the question. Alright, anything else on that one before I move on? Alright, next is item number four, dealing with water efficiency requirements. That is also you, Kaipo?
This is a, the, the regulatory change that we're proposing is a component of our metropolitan, no, wait, MS4, what does that stand for? Municipal stormwater, separate stormwater sewer systems.
Municipal separate storm sewer system.
Yeah, it's an EPD program that allows us to discharge stormwater into the state. It's a environmental compliance program, and this is a component of that. Basically, we're required and confirmed through annual audits to follow the model ordinances for the north, the metro, north Georgia Water Planning District. And this is something we have to do for compliance with those programs. It's over and above the state standard construction codes, but everyone in the district has to follow that standard in order to continue with their permit requirements.
Alright, I think I got the nod from Kaipo. Yes, Gary?
I have a question on that. I didn't quite follow what you were saying there, because what you appeared to be describing was more of, of collecting of stormwater and disposing into streams, is what it sounded like to me, but as I read the ordinance changes, that was all interior water that would discharge into the plumbing system. What am I missing on that?
That's correct. The model ordinance was developed through regional stakeholder input, and it's, like I said, it's a component of that water resource management reg- regulatory landscape that we have to.
Yeah, if I, if I can jump in, it, it includes water resources, stormwater, and wastewater. It's all addressed by this one organization, so it's in partnership with those other permitees that provide those other services, like Gwinnett County. But because we've got a stormwater permit, we are subject to having some of the same regulations and standards that the entire district does.
Thank you, Troy, for the explanation. Yes, that Water Planning District was created by the General Assembly, we're a part of it, and we're obligated to abide by their rules and regulations. And so, all of this is, is just something that we need to adopt. It's very simple. Alright, any other questions or comments on that one? Alright, next we'll move on to number five, which is an update on a policy analysis for residential driveways. Kaipo?
This is an issue that was brought up from City Councilwoman Avery, over concerns about her policies regarding parking in single-family residential lots. City, our planning staff did some research and just to kind of summarize what our requirements are, the city has a property maintenance ordinance, which prohibits parking on grass, lawn, dirt, kind of anywhere in the yard areas of a, any house in Sugar Hill, pretty Also, the city's zoning ordinance has two sections that deal with this particular requirement, and that requires all vehicles be parked on a concrete, asphalt, or gravel driveway. And then it goes further to specify a 30% maximum coverage for the front yard and a 20% maximum coverage for the rear yard, well as a 35% combination, or a maximum, or a combination of the front, side, and rear yards. So that's what our current policy, and it's, in the zoning ordinance, it shows up in two So, we looked at what the county requirements were, Swanee, Duluth, Euford, Milton even, so all of those were 30% or more as a maximum pavement coverage for their single-family residential parking areas. The, as a, in order to change those two zoning sections, we'd have to go through a process with the Planning Commission, advertise zoning ordinance amendments, which regardless of the policy direction we get, my recommendation is to keep the percentages the same and just refine the language and consolidate those two sections into one, so it's a little easier to administer. But the, I would like to go through the process to consolidate those two paragraphs, I recommend doing that. And as part of that, we could also develop a, kind of a driveway manual for access to public right-of-way that we can kind of coordinate with Public Works for standards on how driveways inter- face intersect with city streets. There's a lot of variability in the type of driveways, the amount of coverage, the age, surface type throughout the city. Could be challenging to propose a one, a one kind of size standard for all of those I think that's all I have to introduce the topic.
Alright, thank you, Kaipo. Has this been a problem in our community? I'm not aware of any situations.
I'm aware of one complaint in the last 19 years, there may have been more that I've forgotten about, but one recent one has come to the surface.
Alright, any questions or comments? Yes, Meg?
Kaipo, I appreciate your research into seeing what we can do and what other cities do, and I really appreciate that. And I would definitely have to agree that to consolidate these two sections, the two articles in the zoning, because one is basically dealing with the driveways and the other dealing with parking and single-family residential. So I would definitely agree that consolidating those two sounds like a really smart way to go about that. And, and I would hope that while you're, if, if this is something that, that you pursue and you do, as far as the driveways go, I realize that there may not have been many issues, but lots is changing in the city, changing as far as the rents available, where to live, how many people can live there, how many people can park there, and a lot of that is changing. I would like to request that if you do go ahead and look at this, I believe that there should be no more than two driveways in a home in a single-family residential district. So I think that would be something important to look at. And, and then the 30%, as you say, you know, that, that is consistent with other cities in Gwinnett County. And as far as the parking, when you mentioned the 30%, it had always been explained to me several years ago that, I never heard a percentage until recently. Several years ago, it was explained to me that if you had an RV at your home and it was in the side, none of the RV could extend past the house, it had to be in line with the house. So I had never heard 30%. So I'd like to, if you changed anything, I'd like to see that clarified a little bit better. And I'd also like to see, if you do look at the section, Article 11 of Regarding Parking, that, which refers to either, you know, an RV, or a boat, or an extra vehicle, I would like to see it listed in there that the RV that's on that property, or that boat, whatever vehicle, is one that belongs to the homeowner. Because with the housing crunch lately, the cost of housing, the cost of apartments, there have been issues in other cities and states with people living in campers at their friends' houses. And I think it's important for the citizens to realize that Sugar Hill takes pride in its city, and that's not something we want to start here. So I think it should be the homeowner's accessory property that is on site, that would be something to look at. But I would definitely be in favor of both of these two articles, having a little bit more specifics mentioned and being consolidated, and I would appreciate that. I hope that you can move forward with that.
Thank you, Meg. Any other comments or questions? Yes?
Quick comment, thank you for getting this info and everything. I think just, as a matter of efficiency for you and your team, Kaipo, I don't, I don't know, you said you recommended kind of combining both those paragraphs. I would love to see if, if the zoning team, if y'all have anything else that you might recommend, if we clean it up and kind of do one fatal swoop of just, you know, let's make a couple changes and kind of consolidate, if we can kind of clean it up at one time, and just kind of be efficient for y'all, instead of kind of going issue by issue, if you have anything else, while we're, while we're doing it anyway through planning, planning zone, or Planning Commission. So, just food for thought there. So, thank you, Kaipo. Thank you, Josh.
Comment? Yeah, I agree with what Meg was saying about the number of driveways. We've had issues in the past, and, and I think we're gonna tend to see it again, as, as the housing prices and all are discussed about over occupancy of houses, multiple families and single-family zonings and those sort of things. And this is one of the tools we use to control that, is because you can't go in a house and see who all lives there and demand to see, you know, if they're related and those sort of things. But one of the things that you do is, you can't at least control the, the number of cars, the parking on the grass and that sort of thing, and then one of the ways around that is additional driveways. I do think two driveways are, I would think in nearly every case, more than enough for the, for, to, to cover the need there. I don't like the idea of being able to bisect a front yard with a third driveway. I think the, the yard should be contiguous there, and, and so maybe some things we, we need to look at in that area. The, the percentages, I'm not that familiar with, if those seem standard, I don't have a problem with that, but we have at least seen, you know, an issue or two with this, and I just don't want it to become a widespread problem throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Anybody else have any comments or questions?
If there are no other, Mayor, I have one clarification on the, that I, maybe I misspoke, but the question of the RV in the front yard, there's no percentage associated with an RV. It's either, and this is current code, it's either behind the front line of the house in the side yard or the rear yard, or it isn't. So any portion of an accessory use, accessory vehicle, recreation vehicle, boat, or trailer that's past the front of kind of the plane that is created by the front of the house on any corner would be in violation, so.
Alright, thank you. Alright, next, let's move on to item number six, and that's you, Meg. That's the Planning Commission attendance policy.
Thank you, Mayor. We discussed a couple months ago that since the Development Authority and the Downtown Development Authority both have attendance requirements, it might be a good idea to also have that for the Planning Commission. So the, I'm proposing the following policy for Planning Commission attendance. Board members are expected to attend all regularly scheduled Planning Commission meetings. Whenever possible, a minimum of 24-hour notice by phone, email, or text to the Planning and Zoning Director of inability to attend a meeting should be given. Following the December Planning Commission meeting, the Planning and Zoning Director must inform the mayor and city council if a board member has not attended at least 75% of the meetings in one year.
Thank you, Meg. I support it, I just need to ask a question to Frank. What format do we need to do this in next Monday? When we did the other bodies, there was a bylaw amendment. I don't think there's a, there are any bylaws for the Planning and Zoning Commission, so can we just adopt this policy statement?
So, the, your Planning Commission is set forth in your zoning ordinance, for certain. I don't know if there are also any code provisions in your general code of ordinances that, that touch on the Planning Commission. Some of our clients have it also in their code, so it could be through a code amendment, or it could be through a policy. So I'm gonna have to double-check your code and see if there's anything in your code related to the Planning Commission that we would do an ordinance, or if we will just do it through a resolution or policy change. So I'll have to look and let you know.
Since we have the language that Meg has given us, do you think that you could maybe know by next Monday?
Yes, we can, we can put it into the appropriate format by next Monday in whatever method or manner we need to proceed.
Any questions from city council about the language itself, or? Okay, alright. Thank you, thank you, Meg. Alright, now we're gonna move on to city manager discussions and updates, and we have one item under there for Meg to discuss, that's the first one. Meg, that is the single-family residential parking, but we may have already covered it, and if we have, just, we'll move on.
I believe, I believe that we have, especially since Kaipo did mention that it is a violation when the RV or boat extends past the side of the house, because that, those words were not in the, the zoning code.
Got it.
It just mentioned the percentage. So that is, is basically what I wanted to say about the, the parking, single-family parking, and, and about the RV or boat belonging to the homeowner. But that was basically what I wanted to cover.
Okay.
So, Kaipo, thank you for clarifying that.
We'll move on to Paul for his city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief King is not here tonight, but I think she has a, a good excuse, her daughter is receiving an academic award tonight at, at school, so congratulations to her daughter and to the proud parents. In our public safety report, we do have Deputy Chief Marshal Andy Smith here tonight, and Tommy, thank you for being here. I'm gonna give that report for Diane. In terms of, you know, our operations, one of the things that we insist on is that our, that our marshals become, are very, very visible throughout the community. They've done 140. They've done 144 residential checks in April, 290 business checks. They are constantly going through our parks in our, in our city assets, and then obviously they participate, enter in attendance at our community events. Because of now, we have nighttime overnight marshal service, and we have, also have our reserve marshals, and we also have our regular marshals that are staying here late at night. We have a visible presence downtown, which I think is exceptionally important. Our, our marshals are working collaboratively with Gwinnett County Police Department in terms of when there's items that need to be handled, such as traffic complaints, noise complaints, you know, suspicious persons calls, domestic violence, found property accidents. Many times, we're the first people there, and then we do, but we do coordinate with Gwinnett County Police. As you know, we've started the process of issuing citations for illegal parked cars. We've, we've issued 18 of those, and we continue to log almost 1,600 activities in the month. The marshals also logged, our reserve marshals, which if you recall, they have to go give us 10, 10 hours per month in order to receive, retain their post certification. We had 55 hours of volunteer work by our reserve marshals last month. And our, I'm really proud of our officers participating in community outreach activities, whether it's with the White Oak Elementary Sycamore or other various events. And, and Marshal Parker and his sidekick is participating with, continuing to pursue the Sugar Hill Youth Empowerment Program. I appreciate Cindy Pugh, our finance director's participation in that as well. And then our marshals have all successfully completed the Georgia Firearms Course to retain their post certification, and we are onboarding our newest member, which is our overnight marshal, Chris Fish, and we added two new reserve marshals to our corps. So really appreciate the fact that folks want to be part of our marshal service. Giving an update on events, even though we got Avery here, she's probably got her, her voice is probably not working well tonight, but we do have Four Rentals in the Theater in May that will take away a total of 20 days of activity in the theater. Bowl and the Eagle are booked for 25 days out of the 31 available. We have our first concert series on May 24th, that'll be The Fray, and then Spring Market and Sparkle for Sugar Hill on May 11th. If you saw the snapshot, you can see how busy we're going to be in the month of May that was sent out last, last Friday by Madison and Victoria and others, Alexis, we, I think just looked fabulous. When I saw it on Friday night, I had to text them and tell them, wow, it is very impressive, and I, and wow, and how much activity we got going on down here. Splash Night will start on May 31st. It'll be superhero theme with a showing of The Guardians of the Galaxy, Volume Three at Sundown. I haven't seen one or two, but I'm sure three is good. Memorial Day Ceremony will take place on May 27th at 11:00 AM. It'll actually have, it'll start closer to 10:30, and I know that the mayor and others are doing a great job of, of having a ceremony that will, it'll be a somber ceremony, but one of great appreciation for those who've lost their life and given for this country. The Broad Street Concert Band will begin at 10:30. Touch a Truck on the landing on the 22nd, and then Music at Sugar Hill, which is on the, on the promenade on May 3rd, 10th, 17th, from, May 10th and 17th from 5:30 to 7:30. Something I know that I'll be at, this one, Yoga on 5:18 and 5:25. I just don't know where it is, but is it in the Bowl? Yoga? Okay, in the plaza. Hey, I'll see you out there. And then the Peach State Cornhole Tournament starts May 19th, and then Peyton Siff and the Art Gallery on 5:30, 31 from 6:30 to 8:30. Just a lot of activity going on downtown, and I appreciate the work of our staff on that. Then I'll turn it over to Troy to give us a construction and operations update. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adford. I wanted to mention a few things that are not quite at the construction stage yet, but as a part of the Ellison Square development on Old Coming at Highway 20, the developer was required to prepare a traffic signal warrant analysis for that intersection. It was completed, reviewed by Gwinnett County, and sent on to Georgia DOT for review, but it looks like they're, all the warrants were met to support a signal at this intersection. The developer will be responsible for paying their share as a part of the zoning conditions. And so, somewhere in the future, we will be looking for maybe some other form of traffic control here at that location.
Can you clarify where that is?
Old Coming at Highway 20 at the Animal Hospital. On the east end of Old Coming. The next update I'll provide for you may be verbal, since it's not cooperating. But one of the other projects that I know we've discussed is the intersection of First Avenue and Lanier at the railroad crossing. The railroad has completed the upgrades to the rail lines at the crossing. They were not able to provide as wide a paved shoulder as we would have liked, so we're going to be pursuing some additional improvements at that location to widen out the shoulder, stripe the edge lines, center line, and provide the raised pavement markers required for better visibility at night. We also have the street lighting project at the locations that we've mentioned previously. I'm going to disconnect and reconnect and try and find out what's going on here.
Troy, can I ask you a quick question about the railroad crossing? It's a lot better, by the way, and even though they're not able to widen it, I am disappointed in that, but I know that that is on them. It's nothing to do with us. One of the other complaints that I receive a lot is just at night, it's very dark there. I know the lighting along the sidewalks will help, but do you think it's possible at all that the railroad could put something there that would make it brighter at the crossing? And I, I know they're federally regulated and lights may be an issue, but have we asked?
I think when you get close to the railroad right-of-way, it's very difficult to work with them on setting a pole. So even though Georgia Power is a big agency, they may have difficulty setting a pole at that location. We have looked at getting as close to the intersection as possible with our street lighting project. And then there are a few residential properties near the corner, and I think being mindful of light pollution is kind of where we're thinking as well.
Understand.
So the ones we're installing are trying to direct the light more at the pavement, not in driver's eyes or in windows of homes.
Thank you.
So the other intersection that I wanted to highlight and mention is the intersection of Old Swanee, North Price, Cheeley, and Old Atlanta, and that location is just to the south of this one. That is not going to let me click down to, my apologies. You may be familiar with the location, and I think I provided some imagery of what the four-way stop is proposed to look like. I did mention at one of the previous meetings that we'll look for a future project to construct a roundabout at that intersection in cooperation with Gwinnett County as a part of a future sploost. And the four-way stop will be installed later this month, once school gets out. The county has requested we wait until school traffic is no longer a consideration, and then they have agreed to install temporary message boards for us in advance of the installation. I'm going to just say, I think I'll save the rest of my update for next week when the computer is cooperating.
Thank you. Yeah, everything seems to be moving a little slow tonight from a technology standpoint. All right, so usually I would check with Paul to see if we have any executive session items, and I failed to do so today, so I don't know. Do we have anything that we, okay? All right. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Mayor, I make a motion to go into executive session for legal real estate or personnel matters.
All right, I think we're going in for legal real estate matters, it sounds like, from Paul, so I have a motion. Is there a second? Second from Josh. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All right, we will go into executive session and come back out. All right, we are back from executive session. We discussed a number of real estate items. I counted seven that we discussed. We have no action to take outside of executive session, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn our work session meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? A second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.